I got it.
We can do more dad jokes.
What have you got Dustin?
Why don't you play poker in the jungle?
Why?
He looked like he did because there are too many cheetahs.
Well, I could just talk through it and then email it after.
Like email it to us.
We've got it.
Okay.
We've got it on our.
Okay, I can just talk through it then, Mayor. Are you fine if we don't speak it and I can just talk through it?
Counsel, we did get the email that came from Matt, so if you want to pull that up.
Well, I don't know if that was the same slides. Were your slides just going to be the quarterly report?
Yep, the quarterly report and a few updates to make.
Could we email that to Juan? And Juan, could you pull it up? Oh, okay. Perfect. It's like a well-oiled machine.
Chief, how do you spell your last name?
Dern, D-E-R-N.
E-R-N, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I misslegitarily, but that was going to be the easier way for.
No, it's fine. That's fine. I still got my flash drive too, just in case I need it. Does everybody have that displayed? Am I able to go? All right, awesome. Well, thank you for having me. Like I said, my name's Dustin Dern, Emergency Services Assistant Chief for UFA, and I'm happy to provide a quarterly report and an update on a few things this evening. On a second slide in is some of our run stats for the first quarter of this year. You can see that our call volume was 947 incidents for the quarter with 399 of those being emergent, so about 42%. And what an emergent incident is, is what's the most critical of critical. Structure fires, strokes, heart attacks, breathing problems, those types of events. And then within that slide two, you can see a monthly incident count for the quarter and then comparisons to previous quarters. So a little bit of a drop, but nothing that would be, that would point to any sort of significant change. You can see the top fire calls for the quarter, so some structure fires, outside rubbish fires, and then so on. And then our top EMS calls for the city was a breathing problem, sick person, short falls, motor vehicle crash, and then unconscious patients. And then the last category there is just shows some other call types within the city. Below there is a couple of graphs or charts that show incoming units. So that's just the units that responded and the percentage of response into the city. So you can see from Station 125, 126, 110, and Cottonwood Heights and so on. And then the numbers drop pretty significantly from there for those total responses. And then that's for engines and trucks. And then next to that is just a bar graph showing ambulances. So you can see vast majority of ambulances into the city are responding out of Midvale. And then the number off to the right is our emergent total call time. So what this is, is the 90th percentile call time from time of dispatch, so when the tones go off in the station, to the time that our crews arrive. And that ninth percentile time was seven minutes and 19 seconds for the quarter. On the next slide over, we just have a couple of updates. So Camp 59, Recruit Camp, is winding up pretty quickly. Next week is their last week. Their graduation will be on the 14th down in Riverton. You're all welcome to attend, but we're going to be graduating 33 recruits. We're really excited to have those individuals out working in the stations. And the last few weeks here, they're wrapping up some wildland training, wildland certifications, and some EMS skills sign-offs. We just wrapped up our battalion chief testing this last week. We had 15 candidates participate and go through that process. So it starts with a written test, and then that's kind of the hurdle test. There's a cutoff down to 15 individuals from there. And then we have two days of where they go through a tactical exercise, problem solving. They give a presentation similar to this to get them ready to be presenting to councils. And then an interview process. We rank them from there on a list, and then we have promotional interviews after that. So we currently have one open, we will have one opening, one open battalion chief position here soon. And then a proposed fourth battalion in our budget. So depending on how that goes, we could see more battalion chief promotions within the next several months. And then just a wildland update, our wildland division just onboarded 40 seasonal firefighters for the 2025 fire season. They're going to be working on both mitigation here locally, fuels mitigation, and then response efforts for all those resources. And then as we look ahead to the fire season, forecasting the Great Basin and locally here along the Wasatch Front indicate that we're going to see an active fire season. So we're going to be gearing up and be ready for that. We did see some recent promotions. So with Chief Larson leaving, Battalion Chief Wade Watkins was promoted into that fire marshal position. They were, he was actually promoted last night. And he previously was Battalion 12, which is down on the south end of the valley stationed out at Harriman. And he's currently Riverton's liaison, and we're excited to have him in that position and get that filled. Big shoes to fill with Chief Larson, but I'm sure Chief Watkins will do just fine. And then we recently had an assistant chief opening, and that was filled by Chief Wade Russell. He's going to be our new administration and planning assistant chief. And he was previously our operations chief, so he was the individual that all the BCS, the shift BCS are reported to. And with that, is there any questions I can answer for council?
Any questions for Chief Dern?
Wonderful. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. I promised him we'd get him out of here as quickly as possible. Thank you so much. Next up, we have public comments. Any person wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the city council at this point by stepping up to the microphone, giving your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Sue Armitage, and I wanted to just say that Public Works is awesome. I was walking down Main Street two Thursdays ago, and I noticed in the middle of a sidewalk a drilled hole that had no cover on it. And I thought, oh, a child of four or five could fit their leg right in there and break it. Or somebody could, you know, catch a toe in it. And I just called Public Works about 10 minutes later, spoke with Jeremy, and he said, okay, I'll have somebody come out and take a look at it. So Saturday, two days later, I was back on Main Street again to go to the art house. And by George, that hole was covered. So that was 48 hours. Good for Public Works. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue, and thank you, Public Works. The thing she left out of the story is, I believe when she called Public Works, Jeremy answered the phone. So we are all hands on deck, so we appreciate it. Public Works, as always, yes.
Hi, my name is Megan Thireen. This is my son DJ. This item is actually coming up on our next agenda for two weeks from now, but I wanted to talk to you about something that is very important to us. It's going to affect our well-being. There's an opportunity for a rezone of the property on 7,001 South and 900 East. And the proposed idea is to build a high-rise apartment building with shops underneath it. And we are very concerned about the safety of all the people in our area. And so before that comes up on the agenda, I'd like to invite you guys to come and check out the area if you haven't been there in a while. Specifically between the times of about 4:30 and 6:00, because the traffic in that area is a nightmare. And also in the mornings when kids are going to school at Hillcrest High, because it's right around there too. So I have a concern for just our, I don't know, our quality of life in that area. If we have a high-rise right next to our house, it's going to block our sunlight. We're not going to be able to build a garden and just have a good time as a family, learning about some things like that. This is a little civics lesson for my son here, so he's learning that we get to come and speak about things that are important to us. I care deeply about his safety and other community members that are walking in the area, walking to Smith's, to the other shops at Fort Union. There's a couple of bus stops around there. One of my neighbors just spoke about it at the planning commission, that she almost got hit by a car twice just going to Smith's. And we're just worried that if we pack a ton more people in that area, it's not going to be safe for anybody. There's going to be accidents, cars, and it's just not going to be good for anybody. So please come and visit that area, drive through around those times, check it out, and then we'll be back in two weeks to speak with you again. And I'm sure plenty of my neighbors will be here too. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing your concerns, Megan. Anyone else? Public comment? Good to see you, Davy.
Hey, thanks. I'm Davy Byrd. I'm the manager at the library, Tyler Library. Since the firefighters are here, I just wanted to publicly thank them for saving our library from burning down this weekend. Actually, it wasn't that intense. I don't know if any of you were here for that call. It was just a fence, but our neighbors lit our fence on fire, and so they were here in about two minutes, and that was really fantastic. Also teaching our neighbors not to use blow torches on the fence. So thank you for that, and that's all.
All right. Well, thank you, Davy. That was interesting. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move along to council reports, and we'll start, as always, with Councilmember Bonnie Billings.
Nothing today, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Paul Glover?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Heidi Robinson is hopefully doing something fun. Not that we aren't. We are doing something fun as well. Councilmember Brian Brown?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. Last council meeting, I was here for a minute, then I ran out to go to the school board nomination for the Teacher of the Year for Corner Canyons. And one of our Midvale City, one of the teachers from Midvale Elementary won. I think the mayor probably announced it when that happened. I just wanted to give everyone a little bit of insight how that works. They nominate, every school in the district, you know, gets tons and tons of nominations, and then they whittle that down to a handful in certain categories. And they go to this. And they go to this event where they then announce, you know, they'll, they'll have three or four teachers in each category. Then they announce, you know, best of for seventh grade, best of for eighth grade, you know, best of for ninth grade or whatever, and then, and then best of overall. And I just take so much pride in Midvale because there are schools from Sandy and Draper and, and Cottonwood Heights. And every time they would announce one of those teachers, there would be, you know, a nice little clap and, and appreciative. Every time a Midvale teacher was nominated, they had a whole cheering section. They wore shirts with teachers' pictures on it, standing up, almost like kind of secondhand embarrassment that it was, it was so strong, but it was for every single one. Like they were there to obviously support, you know, their specific teachers, but as soon as like any Midvale school. You know, I just think we punch so much higher above our weight than any other city. You know, I'm just very, very, I get emotional about Midvale. Um, and on that note, my second one is, uh, we just did bulk waste a couple of weeks ago. I know that that is stressful, you know, for probably a whole lot of people at the city. Um, you know, residents don't always comply. Sometimes bulky waste doesn't pick up things they should. People put it out afterwards, which that really stinks. But it's probably the one event that every resident really, 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 really appreciates. You know, like it keeps our city clean. There's probably, you know, a few neighbors we wish would put a little bit more out for bulky waste, uh, every year, but, um, you know, I just want to thank the city, you know, for, I'm sure it's just, oh, no, it's coming up, but, you know, I, I want to say the city, the residents really, really do appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, council member. And on your point, teacher of the year, we are going to recognize them at, uh, upcoming council meeting, hopefully next month.
And hope, and I would not be shocked if she won state and then she go, so she'll, sorry, Mayor. The next process is she goes on for best of state and then if she wins best of state, then she goes on for best of country. And this teacher was my daughter's teacher, so I hope she wins.
All right. Uh, council member Denise Michelash.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to encourage everyone to volunteer for the mural festival. I did that yesterday. Very exciting, um, great way to get involved. Um, also the community council met, um, I believe this week and it made progress. I'm excited to see where that's going. Um, and also, um, my dad retired from unified fire department, so I love seeing you guys here. I've heard the good, the bad, the funny stories, so, um, but he was a battalion chief, went through the whole process, so thank you for all your hard work and your support.
Thank you, council member. Uh, my report, I just wanted to run down a few things. It's been, uh, busy a couple of weeks since we had our last council meeting. Um, as council member Michelash mentioned, the community council did meet last Wednesday, um, the last of what I call the open house trilogy. Um, so they are, uh, the training wheels are off at this point, so they have decided to be a mostly independent, um, committee. Their first meeting is on May twenty-first. That's going to be here at, um, in the Doll Conference Center. The plan moving forward is to actually meet at the Tyler Library, which I think is going to be a nice location for them. Um, but we do plan to be as involved as the city, the mayor, um, chief. I don't think we've talked to you yet, but they did request, um, you know, getting an update from you every so often. Uh, but we, we want to be as active with them as they want us to be active with them. So it'll be an interesting, uh, relationship moving forward, so, um, that should be interesting. And of course, anyone from council is invited to their meetings as well. So next one, uh, May twenty-first here at City Hall, six, six P M. A couple of things, tomorrow is a fallen officer ceremony. I plan to go to that. I think some other folks here from City Hall are going to go. Um, if anyone wants information on that, I believe it's ten A M., ten A M. Um, so if you guys want to accompany us to that, I can send out some information. Um, just let me know after the meeting if, if anyone here wants to go and I can get that info. Uh, two weeks ago, Glenn Kennedy and I, uh, attended the ACE garbage symposium and, um, I know that's, that's funny, but it was actually extremely informative. And I think it's one of those things, like, uh, we used to do new, uh, council member orientation at the, for lack of a better term, the dump. And, um, I think it'd be nice to get council to go to the ACE symposium, who's, as council member Brown mentioned, bulky waste. One big partner in that is ACE. And, um, you know, just being able to talk to them, get to know them better. I'm all about having better relationships with folks because it just makes it easier when you have something difficult to call ACE and say, hey, um, we have a, an issue for you to deal with, um, when you know the folks better. Also, they have a, uh, dump truck simulator or a garbage truck simulator. Um, I had to leave before, uh, I could do that and I regret that more than anything. So, um, last two things real quick. Last Friday, I did my second career day at, this time at Copperview Elementary School. So that was a lot of fun. Previously at Mid Valley Elementary School, they put me in fourth and fifth grade classes, which, you know, it's kind of easier to have a conversation about being mayor, uh, to fourth and fifth graders. This was first and second grade classes, so that was a little trickier. Um, they didn't care about, uh, the mayor thing so much as they did about the big scissors. Um, so we did some ribbon cutting ceremonies. It's a lot of fun. Um, last but not least, this Friday, uh, the Boys and Girls Club have invited me to help judge their youth of the year competition. I've never felt more pressure in my life. Um, I don't even know how that's going to go. And I think council member Billings was, did they email you about that as well?
Uh...
I can check into it.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I'm not sure exactly what that's going to be, but they did want me to let everyone know that is open to the public if anyone wants to come. That's six P M. Friday at the Boys and Girls Club. As always, I've said too much. Let's move on, uh, to our city manager report. City manager Matt Doll.
I'm nothing secret.
Whoa. That is a rare, rare occurrence. Um, someone, can you mark that down, Rory?
It's midnight.
Okay, moving on then, is it seven? Yes, it's way well past seven. So we move into our first public hearing, first and only public hearing of the night. Uh, received public comments regarding the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six proposed Midvale City tentative budget beginning July first, twenty-twenty-five and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. As always, our budget guru, Mariah Hill.
All right. Sorry, just a few housekeeping things about the budget and the budget process. Um, here is our timeline for this year's fiscal year twenty-twenty-six budget. Uh, we had our budget and strategy workshop on March twentieth and then we will adopt the tentative budget tonight. We will hold a public hearing on the budget on June third. And then on June seventeenth, you will either adopt the final budget and the certified tax rate, or we'll move into truth and taxation. Um, and if we move into truth and taxation, then we will hold a public hearing on that, get all our noticing done and hold our public hearing and adopt a final budget on August twelfth. Um, and that, we have to set that date before June first. They've changed things up and the timelines don't really make sense because we have to tell them when we might have that hearing before you guys decide to do that, but that's just what that is right now. Um, okay, so the tentative budget is the city's estimated revenues and expenditures for each fund for July first, twenty-twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, and all of our departments fall within a fund. This, uh, budget is the most tentative budget I've ever presented to you guys in that things are just still changing every day. And so we, we'll get new actual numbers every month. And in general, the information I'm sharing with you is a little less granular than I usually do. I'm usually pretty confident at this point. I'm just really confident that things will change at this point. Uh, but you have the granular information in the budget book. The public has that in the budget book. So if you're like, she seems like she's sharing less, it's because I'm just less confident that this is exactly how this is going to land. Um, this budget has been prepared by the finance department and the city manager and is officially presented by the city's budget officer, which is Matt, and reflects an effort to maintain the city's current level of service in these uncertain economic times. The tentative budget is the first draft of the budget. And again, like I said, there will be changes. Um, and then just as a general note is that I think we talk about a lot of, um, jargon and things like this. And I just like to note that you guys all know that because we've talked about it in other places. We did an in-depth financial concepts, um, review at the retreat so that people aren't like, how could they possibly know what she's talking about? We've talked about it, just for note for the public. And because of all of that, please ask me questions as we go through that. Or if you're looking at the budget book at a different time and you have questions, please reach out to me, um, if you're going through it with a fine tooth comb or anything like that. And the public as well, if they have questions. Um, okay, so in the general fund for our revenues, uh, right now we have projected just over twenty-seven million dollars. That's a decrease of thirteen point five percent from last year. A good bulk of that is because we had some transfers from the general fund, uh, into capital projects, but, but there were decreases throughout the general fund as well. We have eighteen point three million in taxes, seven hundred, uh, if the numbers are in red, that's because they decreased from last year. Seven hundred and sixty-five thousand in licenses and permits, four point four million in intergovernmental revenue, two point three six million in charges for services, eight hundred and ten thousand in fines and forfeitures, one hundred and seventy-four thousand in miscellaneous revenue and a estimated use of fund balance of ninety thousand dollars. For our tax revenues, we have eleven point three in sales tax. This right now is a one percent decrease from our fiscal year twenty-five budget. And again, our most, well, we'll talk about that later. I'm not going to get ahead of myself here. For our property taxes, about three point five million. This represents no change from the previous fiscal year. Um, two point seven seven million in franchise and telecom tax, which is about a ten percent increase from last year. Um, and then other taxes, including our delinquent property tax, transient room tax and motor vehicle are seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Okay, overview of our sales tax. Um, when you get your seven point two five percent sales tax on anything that you buy, one percent of that is the local option that comes to the city. And the way that that comes to the city is that, uh, all of the local option sales tax, half of that penny, I'm very proud of this little group, uh, representation here, half of it is point of sale. So if you spend a dollar in Midvale, then half a penny comes to Midvale. The other half of that penny goes into a pool with the state and is distributed throughout the state based on the percentage of population that is in your city compared to the entirety of the state. Um, other things to note about sales tax is that it's distributed to the city monthly by the Utah State Tax Commission. It's on a two-month delay in distribution. So when we get our money in May, which doesn't happen until the end of the month, that is from sales that happened in March. It is our most susceptible tax to economic trends. Um, and you can see in our historical data that we had high spending in post-COVID years where we had large sales tax increases. And now the economy is showing a slowing in consumer spending and consumer confidence. So that's why we're, and our, our actual data is showing that it's proper to project a one percent decrease this year. Um, so we still have May-June data to come in that could change, but that's where we're at right now.
So the sales tax is increasing in July?
No. There's no change to the rate of sales tax and I'm projecting that we will get a decrease in sales tax revenue.
Isn't the county though?
Okay, so that is, yes.
I just want you to be able to explain.
Yeah, so...
They're going to get an increase and they need to know.
Yeah.
What's going on with it?
Yeah, so there will be a point two percent increase. Um, and that will show as going to the county, option sales tax, I believe will be included in there or will it show separately? I don't, like, will it show up like sep, as a separate tax or is it just go to the county and then we get distributed a piece of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and then we get a fifth of that, fifth of a penny.
Okay, and so I just want...
Yeah, so that's not showing in this pool because that will be restricted revenue. It will likely go straight in, will put it straight into our capital projects fund, um, because it is restricted for...
Is that what it is restricted for?
Restricted for transportation.
Okay, I just want everybody to understand.
Yes.
Because when I go to the store in July, I'm going to pay more tax.
It will be, yes, you will, yes.
So I just want everybody to understand what, what that tax is, what Midvale gets out of it.
Yes.
Why you wouldn't put it up here.
Yes.
Well, no, I don't want to...
No, go ahead, but speaking to your microphone.
Thank you. I don't want to muddy the issue too much, but, um, uh, this is a quick reminder, I think this has been mentioned once before, but of that fifth of the fifth, fifth-fifth of sales tax increase that, um, we're going to receive, as Mariah said, ours goes into a restricted fund for transportation. The county actually has, um, an additional use for it beyond transportation, um, that includes for public safety. So if people hear that it can be for that, it is true that the county can use it for that, but the cities cannot use it for that.
I just want...
Yeah, that's all.
...information so everybody knows why it's not here.
I should have included that and I will, to make sure in my future. Thank you. Write that down.
As you said, it's a very tentative budget.
Yes, it is, it is. Um, okay, um, so again, like I said before, I usually have a lot of lines of what are the budget requests? And one of the big things is, is there isn't a lot of budget requests in this. We cut wherever we could. And really when it, I should put this first, but really when it came down to it and I was going through it today, we have two single requests in the general fund that are greater than five thousand dollars. One is a messaging app for twelve thousand and the election for thirty-seven. Everything else, I think there's two for five thousand. Everything else was like three hundred, five hundred, and then there was equaling, uh, cuts in a different line item to offset it. So there's just not a lot. So this is kind of just more of a broad overview. So for salaries and benefits in the general fund, there is a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar overall increase. This, uh, is a little weird. We have a two point two percent COLA because that's what we're putting on based on the April, um, Western CPI, but we're not anticipating it to stay there. So we do have a three percent placeholder in case it comes back higher in, in May or before the final budget. Does include a two percent merit, market and midpoint adjustments, and then two new FTEs, an event coordinator and an RDA attorney, but only one third of each of those is out of the general fund. Again, why I'm not using the numbers because they just are weird. Um, and then for our benefits, we actually had a zero percent medical increase for...
Sorry, weird. We just say one time on the...
Yes, weird because they don't, like, if I say we're hiring an event coordinator for, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, that doesn't make sense at, when you think about hiring an entire FTE. And then it's spread, spread over other funds and things like that. And, yeah, does that answer?
So the event coordinator will be like, um, RDA will have...
Actually, both of the positions are one-third, um, administration and, or in administrative department and two-thirds in the RDA, but then also spread across the RDA funds and things like that.
That makes sense.
The numbers just, I think, make it more confusing than just stating what, what we're looking at. But again, if you want the specific numbers, please let me ask or look at the, at the budget book. Um, benefits, zero percent medical, four point, five percent dental, and then I, uh, came across an accounting error that saved us a, a significant amount of money in our, in our benefit projections. Um, and then we've got some IT equipment increases. We added in switch and server replacement charges, just like we do our, uh, hardware replacements across departments. Um, and then we are properly budgeting our restricted revenues. This is like one of those jargony things we're going to come across, but we have an excess in building and B and C road funds. Uh, again, um, the revenues are greater than the expenditures and we can't just use those for anything else. They have to be used for, uh, transportation and building related costs. Um, and then, like I said, our single requests, there are two, um, that are, are noteworthy. Um, and then one of the big things about this is that we are presenting a public safety special revenue fund. And so instead of showing the public safety department in the general fund, it shows as a big transfer, which there, we'll talk about that more in depth, but it kind of makes things look different than they have in years past. And then I was trying to think of a way, cause like I put together, oh, the departments made all these cuts and then they all come together to be like thirty thousand dollars and you're guys like, that's not that much. But I think one of the ways to represent what all the departments have been trying to do to keep things low is that twelve out of the twenty-three departments, um, in the general fund have a overall budget decrease from the previous year, and that's with wage increases included across them. So they, I think that's a representation of the work that everyone is putting in to just cut wherever they can while maintaining services. That's our whole goal. All right.
I think we need to give you every department thanks for that.
Yes. And, and every, every department did make cuts, just some of them didn't end up with a budget of decrease, but work is being done.
Thank you.[1734.87]
Yeah. Um, all right, in the general government, which includes all of those departments in that pie chart, I'm not gonna read them off. They have a total budget of three point nine million dollars. Um, for, uh, that makes a total of fourteen point five percent of the general fund. Um, and is an increase of three point five from, percent from last year. This is because the election is, falls under this department, as well as the two one-third FTEs are both in here. Um, and in administrative services, uh, two point six million dollars for the total budget. Um, nine point eight percent of the general fund, and that's a point-six percent increase from last year. Um, no notable reasons for that, just general increases. Similar with public works, three point one million dollars, uh, makes up eleven point eight percent of the general fund and has actually a decrease of one point six percent from last year. And then community development has just about one point eight million dollar total budget. This makes up six point seven percent of the general fund and has an eight percent increase from this, last year. That's mainly because we are actually building our building inspection department. They have dedicated revenue, so they're, they're totally fine there. And we're getting them situated and, and really ready to do the work, uh, since the contractors have been doing that for a while. Um, and then here's our big transfers pie chart, which used to be, um, public safety in general, but now it'll just show as a transfer for the piece that's needed for the public safety fund from the general fund. Uh, all right, any questions on the general fund? All right, debt service fund, uh, has a total budget of one point seven million dollars. This, the revenues in this are a transfer from the general fund. Uh, we have some pass-through loans for developers. Uh, and we pay our two thousand seventeen sales tax bonds, our lease payment to the MBA, and then those pass-through, uh, parking structure loans for the developers out of here. Okay, so the public safety special revenue fund. We are proposing the creation of this public safety revenue fund to house all public safety-related revenues and expenses. Um, in fiscal year twenty-six, it will be funded by a transfer from the general fund and a proposed new Midvale's public safety property tax. Um, and that will change year to year. I think there are some other dedicated revenues that we might find are better to move from the, the general fund to go directly into the public safety fund. But while we're making this shift, both for the accounting side and the general understanding of the impact on the general fund, this is the simplest way to move forward right now. Um, but it could have other revenue sources moving forward. Um, and then the expenditures will include our animal control contract, our UFA emergency manager contract, UPD, and then there's some minimal miscellaneous stuff that comes out of here. So, uh, the public safety, so over the past ten years, you guys have all heard this. The UPD has increased ninety-seven percent, and non-UPD costs in the general fund have only increased fourteen point five percent. So the public safety increases have really put a strain on the general fund revenue sources, especially when we don't see growth in our sales tax or new growth in our property tax valuations. So we're proposing to maintain service levels and fund UPD increases, um, is to have, oh, sorry, to maintain service levels and fund UPD increases. Property tax increases have been required and will likely continue to be required. And this tool just allows it, for it to be public safety-specific. So it doesn't just go into the big pool of the general fund. It has to be used for public safety when we use this tool for those increases. Um, the city can level, levy a property tax by ordinance for any specified service. That's in the Utah code. Um, and then a special revenue fund will hold the revenue generated, and it can only be expended for the, uh, the funds can only, for the purpose that's specified. So then we can never use this for anything else. Um, and then truth and taxation for this is similar, um, to if we just raise taxes in general. Um, but some work will have to be done by staff to ensure proper wording on our notices um, and that we're educating residents for, because there will be a new line on their, on their notices and things. Um, just a general property tax overview. Property taxes are based on the assessed values of properties, which is set by the accounting assessor. Primary residential properties in Utah get a forty-five percent tax exemption. Um, Midvale residents right now pay property taxes to eleven, eleven different taxing entities. Um, property taxes, so twenty-twenty-four tax year are based on the calendar year, and we operate on a fiscal year, so that may, can make things a little confusing when you're getting your notices and things. Um, we don't yet have the twenty-twenty-five average residential value, so we're basing these numbers right now on the two thousand twenty-four number, which was four seventy, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which, uh, has a taxable value of a residential property at two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred. And then, um, if we don't go through truth and taxation, then any entity will receive the same amount, dollar amount of property tax as the previous year that was budgeted. Sorry, my mouth is very dry. Okay, so here is, um, an example of what, with this tentative budget, if we passed a public safety property tax, um, what that might look like. So you can see the graph, uh, or the pie chart on the left is all the tax, taxing entities that are on a Midvale, a property tax, where right now, eight point three seven percent of that, the little pink section is what the public safety property tax would be. Um, the tentative budget includes nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars generated by this property tax, uh, which includes the fiscal year twenty-six UPD increase and then three percent of the fiscal year twenty-five UPD budget. Um, we do actually expect the UPD tentative budget to decrease. Right now, we just have a, a proposed budget from them. Uh, but as this sits, we would have an annual increase of sixty-four, sixty-three per average household, um, annually. Any questions on that? This is my last slide on this. Okay. Um, the capital projects fund has a budget of one point six million dollars. Um, we have some sidewalk and pavement replacement and management that we use some sales tax money for, that's earmarked. And then, uh, with some interest earned on what's in that, we'll do some facility maintenance, and then we do have some money coming in from, uh, some state funding, but that's, uh, for previously budgeted projects. All right, into the enterprise funds. Uh, Water Fund has total revenues of eight point five million dollars. This is a nine point one increase from last year. Um, and is, this is the last year the Water Fund is operating off the CFSP. That was completed in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, so we'll work on the next plan after that, this coming year. Um, the expenditures are seven point nine million, this down fifty-two percent. Uh, that's mainly from capital projects, um, that we're working on this year, but aren't in the new budget year. Um, this has citywide salary and benefit increases as well. Um, our Jordan Valley contract increased two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, and we do still have scheduled capital projects of one point three million, as well as our personnel and operating. Um, in the sewer fund, total revenue is a four point three million. This is a seven point eight percent increase from last year. They're also operating on a CFSP that was completed in twenty-twenty-one and will lapse in this fiscal year. Their total expenditures are three point nine million, down sixteen percent. Uh, similarly, for the same capital reasons, uh, as the Water Fund, also includes citywide salary and benefit increases. South Valley Water had increases of thirty-five thousand, and we have scheduled capital projects of two hundred and sixty-four thousand. Um, the Stormwater Fund has a total budget of two point three million dollars, down point one percent. This one is virtually, uh, the same as last year. Um, Street Lighting Fund, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, a decrease of thirty-one percent. That's, uh, for the funding for the Streetlight Master Plan that's currently underway. And there are also salary and benefit increases in this fund. The sanitation fund is one point six million dollars, a point five percent increase. Glenn worked really hard to make sure that this budget didn't have crazy increases with our new ACE contract, but we do need a two percent increase in our sanitation rates. Um, so that'll take our garbage from twelve fifty-nine monthly to twelve eighty-four, and recycling from four thirty-one to four forty, to make this about, this budget balance. Um, our telecommunications fund, which is utopia, has increased three percent to one point oh one nine million dollars. That's essentially just our pledge payment and a tiny percent we pay of our Q payments. Um, the fleet fund is just over two million dollars. This is a five percent decrease from last year, uh, has salaries and benefit increases. And then we have one point four million of vehicle and equipment replacement. The other piece of that is our operating budget. And the IT fund has a budget of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, a decrease of thirty-three percent. That's mainly hardware replacement, um, decreases year to year, they change every year. And they also have salary and benefit increases. Questions?
Any questions for Mariah? Well, thank you. Um, this certainly, um, transitioning from council member to mayor, it is interesting, uh, just to see on a day-to-day basis how, uh, hard our folks work to make this budget as lean and as mean as possible, but mean in a good way. Um, this is a public hearing, so I will entertain a motion to open this public hearing for public comment.
All right, motion, we open public hearing?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All of those in favor of opening public comments, say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are accepting public comments. If you have anything that you'd like to add to this discussion? Sue, I think you're the last remaining member of the public. All eyes on you.
Well, Davy's almost...
Oh, Davy, yeah.
I didn't have public.
Yeah, I feel like Davy works for the city at this point. Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of closing public comments, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, public comment is closed. There is a resolution on the board for the council to consider.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty-five, adopting the Midvale City tentative operating and capital budgets for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, and set the public hearing for the budget, uh, for June third, twenty-twenty-five at seven P M.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Rory, will you call the ayes and nays?
Yes, Councilmember Billings.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
And McLeish?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Moving on, uh, consider consent agenda. Uh, consider the minutes of April fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and to set the date and time, June third, twenty-twenty-five at seven P M, for a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six proposed, the final Midvale City budget. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All right, motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Rory?
Yes, Councilmember Clutter.
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
McLeish?
Yes.
And Billings?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously as well. Uh, moving on to our plethora of action items for the evening. Um, start with letter A. I don't think I've ever seen it go all the way down to letter G before. But our first action item, consider Resolution number twenty twenty-five R twenty-two, approving the Midvale City Park rental agreement between Midvale City and the Yute Conference Incorporated Youth Football Program. Matt Dol.
Thank you. Um, for many years, uh, we have provided, uh, access to the park, specifically the open field on the southern portion of our, uh, Midvale City Park, uh, to the, uh, Yute Conference Youth Football League. Um, most recently, we have been in a five-year contract that has just expired. Um, and there is an interest on the part of the Youth Football League to renew, um, that agreement. Um, we, the agreement that's in the packet that we're presenting is largely the same as it has been over the last five years, again, being that they can use the field area to put three, uh, football fields using temporary spray paint in order to indicate where those fields are gonna be. They are allowed to store some equipment, um, uh, on, on the park property. Um, they are allowed to, in certain circumstances, use temporary facilities, such as, um, like, put bleachers or that kind of thing. And again, in coordination with the city. Um, as far as parking goes, um, the agreement just basically says, if our parking is insufficient, it's up to them to work out with neighbors how they're gonna park it, and then also allows them to put some temporary signage on the park in order to, uh, market the football conference. Um, they must provide the city with, uh, their schedule one month before the season starts, and that includes practices, games, championships, those kinds of things, which largely during the, the season allows them to use the park on a daily basis for those practices, Saturdays for games, et cetera. Um, if they damage any of the, anything in the park, they're, have responsibility for paying for, uh, or repairing it. Um, and the Yute Conference must substantially clean the park up after use for, um, uh, garbage or things that are resulting from their use. There's a five-dollar fee per participant, and the term of the agreement is five years. However, um, either party may terminate with thirty days' notice. In addition to that, the only real exceptions to the agreement from previous years um, is that we have added in some language that allows us, um, some flexibility with changing, um, the use area and stuff if there were to be any major capital projects going on at the park. Um, and, uh, and so that's kind of the real change. So, uh, largely the same agreement, minor changes to it. Uh, that is the proposal. Does anyone have any questions for me?
So are they aware that that very well could happen?
They are aware that there could be a need for some capital projects. However, um, definitely within this upcoming season, we do not believe that they will be impacted by that.
But we're doing this for five years, so...
Right, yeah, yeah.
So I, within five years, hopefully, we'll have some capital projects happening.
I, yes, and we should have sufficient time in order to kind of work with them on, on how to...
Just want to make sure that that's completely spelled out.
Yeah. Good question, though, yes.
I did have a question, um, but I'm sure it's, you know, because they're using our city park, football being what it is, injuries can happen. Um, do we have some sort of liability waiver agreement with them?
They do have requirements for insurance and, um, indemnifying, indemnifying us.
Okay, this is an action item. There is a recommended motion on the board. If there are no further questions for Matt?
Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty-two, approving the Midvale City Park rental agreement between Midvale City and Yute Conference Incorporated Youth Football Program.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, we call the ayes and nays.
Yes, Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
McLeish?
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
And Glover?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes unanimously as well. Uh, action item B, consider Resolution number twenty twenty-five R twenty-one, approving a change order for Bowen, Collins, and Associates Task Order twenty-four dash zero one. And presenting tonight, Steve Bush. Welcome, Steve.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the city is under contract with Bowen and Collins and Associates for design work on the twenty-twenty-five sewer rehabilitation project. The plans are, and contracts, uh, documents are currently in legal department for review. Uh, during the design phase, the public utilities manager added a section of sewer to be replaced on State Street. Uh, the project, uh, the additional work has been included in the final design packet. Uh, since this work was not included in the original task order received, uh, we're using a change order request, so the dollar, the dollar amount of the task order can be, uh, modified. Uh, the amount of this change is fourteen hundred dollars, which, when added to the original task order total amount of a hundred and six thousand, uh, excuse me, a hundred and six, yeah, a hundred and six thousand. In this amount, uh, as this amount is over a hundred thousand, the city council approval is required. I'm asking for and appreciate your consideration of suspension of the rules, so you may act tonight. This will be paid out of the bond proceeds set aside for the sewer rehab project. Uh, the staff recommends approval on this resolution. And I move that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution twenty twenty-five R twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to approve the change order, number one to that task order, uh, number twenty-four dash one, with Bowen and Collins and Associates. Any questions?
Any questions for Steve? Okay, thank you, Steve.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so this is an action item, uh, considering a, uh, suspension of the rules, even though Steve is not wearing a tie, which is somewhat an informal rule. But we do have the...
It's a key thing.
Yeah.
It is a key thing.
It is a key thing. But he does have the Midvale City branded shirt, so that counts. Um, there... There's not a motion on the board, but it is in our packet if the council is wanting to suspend the rules and consider that.
Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty-one, approving a change order for Bowen, Collins, and Associates Task Order twenty-four dash zero one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeses and nos.
Yes, Councilmember McLeish?
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Moving on to action item C, can, this is a, um, ordinance we, uh, tabled last time. It's coming back to us. Consider ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh zero six, approving a text amendment to amend Section seventy dash seven dash seven point two of the Midvale City Municipal Code. And we'll let Johnny, uh, speak to that. I don't want to read that whole thing and steal the council's thunder when you...
Denise actually said she wanted to do the motion for that one.
That's a no.
It is a mouthful. Thanks, Mayor. Um, so like you said, this is coming before you. It is a mouthful. Thanks, Mayor. So like you said, this is coming before you. I'll be brief. So we are moved, as the council discussed, why it was tabled, the addition of retail tobacco specialty businesses, the addition of that to the State Street Zone. So we removed all of that. Everything else remains the same, as previously mentioned, for State Street Zone, regional commercial, and clean industrial, with fixing some errors in the ordinance. So, any questions for me?
Any questions for Johnny?
I know Heidi and Paul had concerns last time. Were those captured?
Yes, yeah, we corrected those.
I wasn't here. I was at the school thing. So what were there? Can someone remember? Or, Captain Glover is still here.
It was the smoke shops. I can't remember exactly. It was the distances and.
The addition of the use of retail tobacco specialty businesses that was, in the past, deliberately left out of State Street Zone, which us in error was adding to this amendment, so we fixed that when it was tabled last time. So we're bringing it back with that change.
So it's allowing more?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. I was like, is someone asking for this?
No, we're going to allow.
No, it was going to, and we fixed, so it's not.
Okay.
This still gives us a little bit of say over if a specialty tobacco shop wants to go into the State Street corridor. The discussion we had when you weren't here, when you were attending the Teacher of the Year Ceremony, was that we didn't want State Street to become a specialty tobacco shop corridor.
Yeah, correct.
So this kind of protects us there. And removing it from medical cannabis was, when you were, when we were all council members, you, me, and Paul, we had discussed that those things don't really go together.
Yep.
Medical cannabis and tobacco shop.
To piggyback on why I wasn't here last week with the schools is, we're geographically a really small city. We weirdly have a lot of schools in comparison. Like, we have a high school, we have, like, four elementary schools all with, like, the name Midvale in them, and then a middle school. And so, like, you know, obviously, I don't want to be seen as, like, making it so adults cannot be adults, but I feel like we just have a duty, you know, to a lot of, a lot of kids. Because, like, Midvale Elementary is probably mostly people not from Midvale. And so, like, I don't want, that's why I was asking. Like, I, again, let, you know, be accommodating when we can for adults, but I would much err on the side of less is more. But I think that's what we're going for with this.
Yeah, it's.
And we talked about this before.
Yeah.
And so that's what we brought up.
Okay.
And those are pretty regulated by state code requirements anyways for distances to, like, refer to them as community locations.
That's what I figure. So it's got to be hard in Midvale anyways, if you start looking at all, you know, probably, anyways, yeah, thank you.
Any more questions for Johnny? Okay, there is a motion on the board.
Mayor, I move that we approve Ordinance Number 2025-006, amending Section 17-7-7.2, 17-7, why do I want to turn this, -12.2A, 17-7-13.2A, 17-7-7.8, 17-7-12.7, and 17-7-13.7 of the Midvale City Municipal Code as provided in the attachments with the findings noted in the staff report.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeses and nos.
Yes, Councilmember Billings.
Yes.
Glover.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mickalash.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously as well. Moving on to Action Item D, consider Resolution Number 2025-R-23, authorizing the mayor to execute the interlocal cooperation agreement between Salt Lake County and Midvale City for the Urban Wildlife Assistance Program. City Manager Matt Doll.
Thank you. Midvale has been a part of the urban wildlife, oops, oop, there we go, Urban Wildlife Assistance Program for a number of years. The contract has expired. They're interested in us entering into a new agreement. We have paid annually into this fund. With the contract that we're looking to go into at this point, the cost would be $5,904 annually. The agreement to be in this program would be five years with an option for five-year renewals. Essentially, this program is funded by the participating members, which is most cities within the, as well as the county within Salt Lake County, and is intended to assist homeowners businesses and animal services with proper management of skunks and trash pandas. The benefits of being a part of the program is that you get to participate in the program, develop programs and goals for the program, and recommend how the spending of this fund is, how the, how the funding is spent, and that funding coming from all of the members contributing to the program. Again, this is mainly just focused on skunks and raccoons. It's not something that the, our animal services program specifically covers outside of this program. Does anyone have any questions about it?
If you have any raccoons, it's worth every penny.
That's right.
The thing I will add to this, I think I mentioned, and for your education, Brian, since you, I don't think you were here when we discussed this, it is a great program. However, just whenever people reach out to you, especially about raccoons, if they utilize this program, it's not a happy ending for the raccoons. It's not like a catch and hold them at the shelter. They are not able to do that. So I do let people know that, just in case. But there is a motion on the board. This is an action item as well.
Why, if we talked about this last week, why are we suspending the rules this week?
Sorry, we did not talk about this last week.
Oh.
Oh, I think I might have just mentioned.
Okay, I was like, did I, I mean, I wasn't here, so that seemed like a thing.
Mentioned, but it wasn't a formal item.
Got it, okay. I just wanted to make sure you're.
Yeah. No, the reason our contract is currently up, I think, at the end of this month. So that would be why.
Okay. Are you ready for our motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and approve Resolution Number 2025-R-23, authorizing the mayor to execute the interlocal cooperation agreement between Salt Lake County and Midvale City for the Urban Wildlife Assistance Program.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeses and nos.
Yes, Councilmember Glover.
Aye.
Brown.
Yes.
Mickalash.
Yes.
And Billings.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously as well. Moving on to Action Item E, consider Resolution Number 2025-R-24, authorizing the mayor to sign the purchase agreement of real property at approximately 332 and 362 West 7800 South on behalf of Midvale City. And to discuss this one is Aaron Summers. Looks like I'm going to have a lot of signing to do after tonight's meeting.
Well, we like to keep you busy.
We could vote no on the rest, if you don't want to sign anything else.
You. Mayor, council, thank you. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about a purchase agreement that we have for half of Midvale City Park. So since 2012, we've been in an agreement with the Canyon School District. We've been leasing that area. It used to be the Midvale Elementary School, and when that relocated to just on the other side of 78, we, they took down the building, and we have rented that build, that space from them ever since for $1 a year. We had a 15-year lease from them, and we were able to make improvements on the land. We were fully responsible for maintenance and management of the land, and we also had right of first refusal if they had an offer of somebody purchasing it. Now, just so that you have a visual, this is the space we're talking about. The red line highlights what is Canyon School District property, which is really the big empty field splash pad, everything farther south. For the last 13 years, this has been a really great space for our residents and families. We have added pickleball courts, the tennis court, basketball court, and a splash pad. We also have a lot of active space in that open field, from just open green space to our Ute Conference, which we just redid that agreement. We have the girls tackle football league, and we also do our Harvest Days Festival and fireworks show in that space. On top of that, it is just highly utilized green space by our community members throughout the year, rentable or usable by residents. Earlier this year, well, over the last year, the Board of Education of Canyon School District has indicated they have an interest in selling this property. It is valued at $4.399 million, and they want full price for this piece of property. Now, this property is a great community asset, and we are able to activate it for community uses. And so, last meeting on April 15th, the Midvale City Council had approved the parameters for the issuance and sale of up to $55 million in sales and franchise tax revenue bonds, which in part, a part of those funds are going to help purchase this part of the park so that we're able to secure it and continue to have it as a community asset. But first, we have to purchase it. Midvale City staff and the staff at the Canyon School District have been working together on a purchase agreement for the property. It is around 10.41 acres across seven different parcels, and the key terms, it's a very straightforward purchase agreement. Key terms would be full price. We have earnest money due within five days of signing, both parties signing the agreement, which is $49,330 grand, 300 grand, I said it right the first time, I'm sorry. It's late. And we're hoping to close around June 16th. We are waiving due diligence as we have maintained the property for over a decade, and we are pretty confident of what the property is. And however, as a part of this process, we have already secured a title report, and we will secure an ALTA survey to make sure that there are no issues on the property for, in terms of ownership of title and of easements. That is the whole kit and caboodle.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? I know this is very exciting for probably all of us up here. It'd be nice to call on what is ours. There is a motion on the board for council.
Do you want to take this one?
You got it.
All right. I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-R-24, authorizing the mayor to sign the sale and purchase agreement of real property at approximately 332 and 362 West 7800 South on behalf of Midvale City.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeas and nays.
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Mickalash.
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
And Glover?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, moving on, Action Item F. Are you guys doing, like, musical chairs? Matt's backup. Consider Resolution Number 2025-R-26, approving the updated committee and board appointment list. Matt Doll. We need walk-up music. That'd be amazing.
Yeah.
And the files.
So, okay, so as you're aware, we on a regular basis, we'll go back and look at the committees and boards list that incorporate, is a list of all of the committees and boards that staff and the city council are part of. And we originally had intended for this item to be a discussion item, talking about some of the changes that we know are coming up with regards to staff. And so, we were going to specifically address those. However, at the time I was writing this, there was an understanding that one of the positions that we need to fill because Keith, of Keith Ludwig's retirement, that we were going to have neither Keith or the backup for the South Valley Water Reclamation position, we weren't going to have that, anyone in that position at the next meeting. So we were going to ask you, and the way the agenda, or, sorry, the memo was currently written, is asking for an action tonight because of that. Subsequent to completing this memo and having it sent out, that meeting was actually canceled. So you can still approve what is requested, which is just the change for the South Valley Water Reclamation, or if you so chose, if you wanted to table this, if there were a bunch of changes that you wanted to make, and we just covered all at the next meeting, you could do that, too. Just, those are your options. So as I mentioned, with Keith Ludwig retiring, there's going to be an opening on the Jordan Valley Water Conservation District Board, and the drought, looking for a drought committee member. The Wasatch Front Regional Council Technical Advisory Committee representing Midvale will be open. The Traffic Control Committee, which we've had listed on there, will be open, and the Air Quality Policy Advisory Board, the latter of which I don't think gets a whole lot of action from, or generates a lot of required effort on the part of the person who's on that. What we're recommending for these upcoming change, sorry, I forgot, one really big one. We also know that coming up this summer, once the transfer station is completed, then Kane Loader, who has been representing us on the Trans Jordan Landfill Board, will be, quitting doesn't sound like the right word.
Stepping.
Stepping down, thank you. That's the right word here. Will be, will be stepping down from that, and so we'll be looking for a replacement on there. For all of these that are listed on here, as well as the South Valley Water Reclamation, our recommendation is that we would continue to have staff members be the representation on there. In most cases, we would either be saying, as we hire a new city engineer, that the new city engineer would replace Keith on most of these committees, and in the case of Jordan Landfill, we would recommend that we would have, that we would have a staff member.
Glenn, would it be Glenn?
Glenn, sorry, thank you. Glenn, I don't know why I said a staff member like that. Having Glenn replace.
He's not here, he's dead to you.
Yeah, yeah. Replace him. He's already the.
Chair?
No.
Or alternate?
The alternate, thank you. All right, he's the alternate. And so then our recommendation is, is that we would just have Jeremy fill the alternate position for that. However, I do know that at least one council member had expressed interest in being on that board in the past, and so I wanted to make sure there was a chance for there to be some discussion about that. And then, in addition to those upcoming changes, and like I said, for the most part, we're just recommending that we just replace them with staff members, which we'll come back to you at the next meeting, with the list filled with those staff members, if you're amenable to that. But we're also open if there are city council changes that you would like to make as far as the representation on those boards and committees that you already have. I know these are not very legible in this PowerPoint, but the information is included in the packet. The, the only change that I have on there right now is that South Valley Water Reclamation Board, this would be the one that you would be approving if you wanted to take action tonight. But like I said, if you wanted to table it and just cover it all at the next meeting, you could do that as well.
And it's just for the alternate position? I mean, I would rather just table it, you know, till the next time.
Okay.
Because it's, not that it's not important, but, you know, it's not like the main person or whatever, right? And I, I mean, I don't know how the council feels, but I would prefer, especially for Keith's role as an engineer, right? Like, I feel like those, that's like a certain skill set, so I would, I would like it to stay with the staff through that same person, right? Because of, because of, you know, the expertise that comes along with that. I, I think Glenn would be great for the, the garbage one, the disposal one or whatever it's called. I just thought it was strange that Kane was still on it. So I didn't know if that, like, it wasn't supposed to be a staff member or what, and it's, or the line fill, I just, it's a very important, something I took for granted until I, we went to that meeting that the mayor was talking about. Like, I think the new council members really should go, I mean, we should go again. And it sounds funny, but it's like, if that shuts down, the city would, that would be one of the first things that, you know, residents would be very upset about it if it stopped working perfectly. So I'm fine if Glenn takes it, and I, you know, I, I just, it seemed weird that it wasn't, whatever, but I guess Kane's institutional knowledge and stuff worked, and he was willing to do it, and so I think that's good.
And Glenn has indicated, I think, to you and me both.
He's done a good job, right?
Yeah, that he's, he wants to do this, so, I mean, that one's a no-brainer.
Oh, yeah, both that Kane did a good, has been doing.
Yeah.
Good job representing us, and that Glenn has interest in that position.
You know, that's fine. I just, again, I thought the whole thing was weird, but it made sense, too, so.
I do have a question about the Air Quality Control Board, and I, Aaron and I spoke very briefly about this earlier today. We would love to be involved, but it seems that they don't do much of anything at all. In fact, I was just looking at their website, and the last thing that they've updated is from, like, last year. I tend to get, like, a letter mailed to me with the agenda, and it's either, like, I get it, and the meeting has already happened, or it's like, this meeting is tomorrow. get it and the meeting has already happened, or it's like, this meeting is tomorrow. So, I don't know, it might be something that we look into to see. And then I looked at the members online and there's no mention of Midvale even having a member on the board. So I think we need to look into that one and see, A, did they do anything? I mean, obviously, I would love to be on the board, you know, if there is an actual Air Quality Control Advisory Board. But it seems to me that this might be an organization that exists to exist.
Yeah, I will, I'll do more research on that one before we come back at the next meeting to see if there's a, if we need to make more changes, even if it's either putting you on there because we have the ability to do that, or for some reason, things have changed and we really just need to not have it on this list.
Yeah. And I think she can give a thumbs up or thumbs down, but Erin could be the alternate if there's thumbs up. If it's something that is worth our while to, to go to. And then if we can, you know, talk to those folks and say, hey, maybe use email for notifications rather than a letter in the mail that I may or may not see before the meeting.
We, I have been making changes over the last couple of years to this list, and I think we've talked about it definitely the last time, which is, at one point, we were kind of, I was using it not only as a method for us to approve the positions that we specifically have the opportunity to appoint, but also trying to also just list for you and for others, sort of the whole host of boards and committees that people are, are a part of, particularly the mayor. With the changes that occurred earlier this year with the selection of Mayor Gettle, it became apparent that that also causes some challenges with, you know, what is appointed, what do we have on there that is just, someone is selected because of who they are, not who they represent, that kind of thing. So we have been trying to modify this. We've also had some other boards and committees that over time, we have been removing that fall into this category of not active, don't exist, that kind of thing. And, and it appears that, you know, there's at least one more that we need to do a little bit more research on, and we'll do that. But it's definitely a list that has been morphing over time.
Matt, the changes that we discussed in January with me joining a couple of the boards, I don't think was captured on this list that you sent. I glanced at it today, but I wasn't sure. Like, the Planning Commission, the Bingham Junction.
I.
I think you may have included an older version.
Yeah, because it was in the notes following that meeting.
I apologize and won't have the right one on the next meeting.
But luckily, I think we determined tabling is the right option, but.
Yeah, I think, yeah, overall.
Okay, any more questions for Matt? Matt, anything else for us? So whoever wants to tackle the, the motion to table.
Do I have to say why? Rory, or do I have to say?
You can just table it.
May I move that we table resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty-six, approving the updated committee and board appointment list for another meeting?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this item. Rory, we call the yeses and nos.
Yes. Council member Brown.
Yes.
Mikulaj.
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. That is tabled. And Matt, you'll bring it back to us at a future meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to action item G, our final action item of our city council meeting. Consider resolution number twenty twenty-five, R twenty-seven, authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services contract with Galloway and Company for architectural design, development, and construction management of the new public works facilities. And here to discuss is Jeremy Thorne.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We'll quickly run through a background and the findings and some other issues to enter into this agreement. The project background, the city contracted with Galloway to complete a needs assessment and a master plan for the current facilities in January of 2024. The goal of this assessment is to meet current and future needs for operations and growth. The findings from that, the new facilities are needed to meet capacity needs. What, what they found is that we need a new decant station for dedicated waste processing area, coverage storage of twenty-one thousand, six hundred square feet for vehicles and equipment, acclimatized storage of forty-three hundred square feet for sensitive equipment, a fleet repair shop of ten thousand, five hundred square feet for vehicle maintenance, a new truck and vehicle wash bay, and office space for administration of thirteen thousand, five hundred square feet. The proposed agreement covers services for design and planning of facilities outlined in the needs assessment to ensure compliance with current and future operational needs, deliverables including schematic design, construction documents, and construction administration. The fiscal impacts are listed here. The schematic design at a hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred, design development at one seventy-five, two hundred thousand, constructing, excuse me, construction documents at three hundred and six thousand, six hundred, permitting and bidding at eighty-seven thousand, six hundred, and construction administration at one hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred, with a total cost of eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. This is the final plan as we go into contract. And all of the blue buildings on there are new. There, a lot of them are overlaid into the purchased property and overbuildings that will be demolished. And the majority of the current public works facilities will be rebuilt as well. Any questions?
I have a couple. So that's a lot of money. Do, do we, do we have to like bid out for that? I mean, to, at that point, I know we probably did to, to get the contract, but that seems like a lot of money to either decide yes or no on, right? Like, don't we normally need, you know, multiple, like, what's the negotiation on that? It's kind of like a take it or leave it now.
Right. And I'm not sure if entering into that initial needs assessment led us through to finding a qualified group, and they do a majority of the public works facilities in the valley.
Just seems like other things that we do there are less money, you know? Sometimes there's like a slightly different process. So it just was an interesting dollar amount where.
Right.
It seems like, oh, I guess it makes sense for us to approve that and hopefully they're, you know, honest with us and whatnot. You know, we're, we run what the mayor said, a lean, mean, tight budget. You know, it just seemed like a lot of money before. That, that doesn't even include breaking ground.
Correct.
Right? And.
That's, yeah, it's, it's design and management service throughout the life of the project, which will probably be a two-year project at minimum.
Matt, you? Okay. Because there's like four phases. Is that for all the phases or just the supply?
Yes, yes, for the whole thing.
And when are we thinking of breaking ground again, do you think?
If we can have all, everything come to fruition over the next few months, we would like to start in the fall, late fall, with the parking lot and demolishing the building on the.
Okay, that'd be good.
On the new space, so. And we could, we hope to possibly start the underground utilities as well at that point.
Yeah, I mean, it's not that I'm going to lose a ton of sleep over it, it's probably right or reasonable, it just seemed like a lot of money.
We, as Jeremy said, we have used Galloway in the past for services, and they do have a strong reputation on this specific type of project. And I definitely understand your point, and there's definitely certain rules, procurement rules that require us in the case of like construction, where we're going to have to go out and bid those things. We have been also working on this agreement for many weeks now in order to try to get everything as dialed in as we can on it. And not only making sure we're protecting ourselves, but also as we're sort of looking at doing a, sorry, protecting ourselves for what is going to be one of the bigger projects that we're going to undertake, and we think that we've done a good job of trying to work this project, all of the details, how we protect ourselves in the best way that we can. In addition to that, as we look at the percentage of the cost, it seems to be in line with what other architecture firms are charging for projects of this nature.
I don't deal with that, so I don't.
Yeah. One of the other things that we also made changes on too was that original version of this was looking at it as being a, as just being a percentage of final project cost. And we have made adjustments to make sure that those are fixed, are fixed costs as we go into those different phases.
And, and this like one other thing, and obviously, a lot smarter people than me came up with these numbers, but like, when you read like, oh, we need forty-three hundred square feet for, you know, acclimatized, and we're like coming in at like forty-three, twenty-four, right? Like, I just hope in ten years, the people sitting here don't go, oh dang it. You know, that, at the time, that kind of looked like it, and we have the opportunity now to maybe build a little bigger or something like that.
Correct.
That always was, when I see the numbers, I'm like, they line up perfectly, and then all of a sudden, Bingham Junction gets fully built out in two years, and we're like, oh dang it, that, that was maybe not.
Right. As, as we went through this process over the last year and a half, we've actually, in our weekly or monthly meetings, we've been through that assessment a few times and made adjustments to it based on any changes that we feel needed to be made. And it's, it's something that, as we go through the design, fully designed process with the general contractor, they will give us their insight as well on uses and ways to utilize the construction methods for our own benefits as well, to possibly gather more space. Even today, we talked about our fleet shop and possibly adding mezzanine within the side sections where there, you wouldn't have a crane to add more storage space. So we're looking at all options as we build because we know that, you know, it should last a good fifty years. So we're, that's, that's kind of the, was part of the objective in that needs assessment.
Any other questions for Jeremy? Okay, I do want to say I encountered some folks from Galloway at the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference, and they had nothing but great things to say about you specifically and Glenn, so I wanted to pass that along to the council. They said that we have two very great folks running the Public Works Department, so I wanted to pass that along to you. There is a motion on the board for counsel to consider.
Mayor, I move that we suspend the rules and approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R dash twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services contract with Galloway and Company for architectural design, development, and construction management of the new public works facilities.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, and Rory, we call the yeas and nays.
Yes, council member Mikulaj.
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
And Brown?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We have one discussion item, and as you can see, as he's staying up here, Jeremy will discuss the Jordan River Trail lighting issues and repair options. Jeremy?
All right, so, due to request by the public, not only to Public Works but to the mayor, he's asked that we discuss the items, well, this item and how we go about resolving the issues that we have here. This is a side-by-side of the sections of the trail that actually have lights on them. The right side is the north side, and the left side is the south, south portion. I just wanted to highlight that so you could get a visual on, on where, where this is in, in adjacent to the river. So as we found that our lights had issues again, we issued our contractor out to do an inspection of what was going on there. And the objective was to assess the functionality of the trail lighting infrastructure. We evaluated the two segments along the Jordan River Trail that I had highlighted in the previous slide, one from seventy-eight and South to Howe Cove, which is what we call the South Lift Station, and the trailhead Tracks Crossing, which is the other side up to FL Smith. Our findings were significant vandalism and theft. The feeder and secondary pole wires were cut and stolen, junction boxes were damaged, filled with dirt with broken lids, and six light fixtures were stolen between FL Smith and the Tracks Crossing. Just to add along with that, we did, just over a year ago, it was probably a year and a half ago, we, we replaced most of the wiring along that, along one of those sections that was stolen. And within ten days, it was stolen again. We did put theft-proof deterrents that are industry standard on the boxes and the units, and they were all just smashed and broken and ripped open, and the wire was stolen anyway. The fiscal impact, the repair for the bid for the damages is seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, and our estimated annual repair or maintenance cost to keep those running is at a minimum three thousand, if not up to fifteen thousand, based on our history of damage and things that are happening along the trail to the lights. The key challenges, theft and vandalism, they're likely, likely to recur without any preventative measures, and that's driven by the trail's secluded nature, lack of patrols or surveillance. And just as another note, we don't know of any other sections along the Jordan River Trail that actually have lighting. So, other than like, there are a few underpass structures or overpass structures that have lights connected to those, but as far as a, a trail lighting system, we don't know of any. So, as we talked about options for consideration, we came up with the following three things. Fund the ongoing repairs, which will continuously fund replacements to maintain operable lights. Remove the lights, remove all lighting and infrastructure to end the ongoing maintenance. And transfer responsibility, which would be transferring ownership and maintenance of the lights to the adjacent HOIs, HOAs, or property owners that are directly adjacent to that trail.
You were probably about to say it, but just to clarify on that, transfer, that's not like a pre-arranged situation, and if that was the way that we wanted to go, we would have to reach out to them and work through that issue with them.
Correct.
So that hasn't happened, is what you're saying, yet? It's just an option?
Yeah.
It's just an option to consider.
Yeah.
Is to start negotiation.
They might not want them.
Or probably wouldn't.
That's my HOA.
I was going to say, we have someone up here.
Yes.
And so, at this point, we are open for discussion and/or your guidance on how you'd like us to proceed with this issue.
It seems like the only way to make it work would be like poles, right? For like a permanent solution where there wouldn't be vandalism, and I don't, I've never seen that along the Parkway. You know, like, like the light poles we have on our street, right? That way it keeps the wire.
They're still in that stuff.
Yeah, there's still boxes that would have to be.
The problem is, is there's no security down there.
Right. It'd be harder if it was a twenty-foot pole with a wire.
And they just pull it right out. I mean, it happens on State Street and everywhere.
Right.
Do you have, since we're the only part of the Jordan River Trail that has lights, can we do any type of comparison on other parts of the trail that don't have lights to see what, is, has their crime gone up? Has their security issues increased because they don't have lights? Do we have any of that intel?
I can say anecdotally, I've walked twenty-five of the forty-five miles of the Jordan River Trail this year. My goal is to do all forty-five miles. I've never seen any lighting systems anywhere else other than underpasses, and maybe trailheads might have some lighting as we do at our Jordan River Trailheads as well. So I think as far as like crime reporting goes, I don't know that the Jordan River Commission might have some data on that, but I think generally, you know, with the lighting, there has been crime vandalism of the lighting. But my, I was always. But my I was always just wondering, like, how did those lights get there? You know, if we, did we initially fund that? Or I know the part where most of the lights are are behind the Intermountain Health Supply Chain Center. So it seems like something they would have at least helped pay.
That that was before my time. I'm assuming it was part of the development agreement when those facilities went in. Where there is a section that goes along, kind of along the tracks line and into the open space up next to Bingham Junction, that still is operable. But all the ones along the trail are are gone and they're all the same type of light. So my assumption is that all went in as part of that development and then turned over to us to maintain.
The really weird anomaly is that section that works perfectly fine. And that's why some of those residents, they see because the part that works fine is behind, you know, most of the residential area. So they see part of the trail illuminated and wonder why it doesn't just extend logically to their own backyards. So that's something to consider.
But I think those areas are more exposed, right? Versus on the trail?
Yeah, it's I think that lighting.
People can see what's going on there versus on the trail where they're a little bit hidden. Because I walk that all the time, too.
Why have we never encountered each other?
Oh, I have. They just ignored me. I mine is I don't think the vandalism is going to go away after we keep repairing it. So that's my concern is the cost to maintain it.
I mean, if we repaired it and it's gone in two weeks again, it would be if we really want it down there, we need to hire security to monitor it all the time, which would be cheaper than replacing it every two weeks.
True. Just seems like if we repaired it, it would just be every year we'd budget a hundred thousand dollars to replace all the lights again. And that doesn't seem like something feasible.
Yeah, and that's where the rest of the trail doesn't have this and it seems to be active. I mean, like you said, I've gone from Riverton all the way up to North Salt Lake on that trail. And yeah, and I they seem to be active, people are engaged. That's why I was wondering if any other cities have had issues because they don't have lights and why just our section does if it's needed.
We could definitely look at the data and I would suspect maybe the chief couldn't. I mean, I don't expect her to have the data at her fingertips. But I mean, the river is a magnet for a lot of activities, the length of it, that are not positive, especially in the dark. And so I don't know about like violence or or any of that kind of stuff around other sections. But I would say that it's probably fairly universal that there's a lot of camping and that kind of stuff that's going on along.
I guess mine is, are the lights deterring that or are they actually attracting them? Because they're coming to steal it, right? I think it could go both ways. I'm just curious if there's any insight into that in other parts to say, you know, lights didn't deter it, they still came. Or it's a target because they know they can steal from it.
Got it. I misunderstood what you're saying.
I'm just trying to help say why we should keep these versus no one else.
I don't think we can keep replacing it and replacing it. Either we've got to come up with a way to make it so that they can't take it or take it out.
I do know, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the HOA because I'm not on that board anymore. But the section from that community to that part of the trail has always been a concern. And so, you know, talking to them about that, see if they'd even be interested. I know we just had a major hike in our HOA fees, so I'm not sure how popular it would be. But but I mean, it's worth exploring if, you know, if that is their biggest concern, then, you know, they could take some of that responsibility with us or from us. But that wouldn't cover the other side or even further down, right? That would be businesses and whatnot.
Yeah, the other, yeah, I was just gonna say, the other thing is that the HOA only has that relatively small section of what we're discussing here. The rest is, you know, behind the lofts and Talabera and those apartment complexes. And I know that those folks probably are not going to want to take on the burden of funding that themselves either. Sounds like the seventy grand is is not consensus among. So then the other two options were removal or transfer the responsibility. And I think we've kind of ruled that out as a group as well. Do you need a thumbs up or thumbs down from the council as to how to move forward or?
Yeah, that that was our hope tonight.
I could I propose that we, if we were to recommend removing the lights, but then having the community provide other input if they had better ideas, what to do there and how to cover that cost if it was a high priority?
We can definitely communicate with the surrounding neighborhood on that. What were you like, what was the forum that you would see that occurring?
Almost like when you're open houses, right? Like, are there other ways that you would see funding this or other suggestions to know that we're removing it, but we're willing to listen to them about other ideas? But I think removing it, we have to do that to be fiscally responsible with our budget right now.
Yeah, I see the point and the value in that. I mean, if we just start removing the lights without there being a very open public process to that, we're going to get a thousand more calls asking why we're doing it and and why we didn't include the public in that decision making process, which we did. I mean, this was publicly noticed, this discussion item. But, you know, let's all be honest that most folks don't read the agenda and go down to the discussion items to see what we might be discussing. So I don't know, is there, I know we, statutorily, there's reasons to do a public hearing. Is there or an ability to do a public hearing on this item so that we notify those who are in close proximity to where the lights would be removed? And and then we've done literally all that we can do other than, you know, knocking on doors and saying, these lights are going to be removed. Do you have anything to say before we do it?
We could.
I know there's the expense of noticing those homeowners and residents and businesses along that corridor, but I think it might be valuable in the end to do that versus fielding a thousand angry calls.
Maybe what if you would find that acceptable, maybe an approach that we could take on it is that we could reach out to the HOAs that are along there, inform them of a discussion and then have that maybe even as a workshop type item for people to, I mean, I guess it depends on if you're wanting us to have the conversation and come back with a report on like what they want to have happen. If you just want a scenario where they're coming up and saying their thoughts on it, or if you're looking for a scenario where you're are engaged in that conversation. So it's because you had kind of said like an open house type scenario. You were saying public hearing. And I guess that's, I'm just curious on like if we were to just reach out to the HOAs, explain what we were going to do, get feedback on that. I guess I just a little bit more direction on how exactly if it's just you're all settled on it should be a public hearing where we provide notice on it. I don't know that that's a a normal for decisions that like that, that we're not noticing everyone within a certain radius all the time on this. But I mean, that's up to you guys if you want us, how you want us to pursue it. But there wouldn't be any cost if I think if we just reached out to the HOA as an informed member of the situation.
Well, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, there would just be one HOA that would be affected, and that's the rooftops. I can't think of another HOA that unless you get across seventy two hundred and into Top Gulf territory. But I don't think they're specifically in the scope of this project. So it would, there would be one HOA, rooftops, and it needs to come.
Yeah, no, I would suggest like maybe just look at the trail map, any HOAs. There might be some we don't know that will be impacted and just let them know, right? I don't think we need anything more formal than that, but just to give them a heads up that we're removing the lights. You know, but if they want to be involved somehow on putting lights there and they have ideas that they could talk about within their community, we're open to it. But as of right now, we're removing the lights, giving you notice. Because I think this group has tried hard to find other solutions and repair it. And it's been a bit of a challenge, so it's not like it hasn't been explored.
The one question I've always had and never really got a decent answer, maybe because I didn't press the question hard enough. Solar power exists, as we all know. And there are solar powered lights, which would make it pretty difficult for someone to steal wiry. Is that anything that we've considered? I know, yes, I know there are some wires that are associated with.
Correct. We we looked pricing wise at the option for some different type of lights. And the cost was doubled to triple the cost, current cost. And then if you have, if you have vandalism, then you have more expensive lights to repair as well. Because some some stuff that happens at the parks and on trails is just straight vandalism. It's not theft. So there is that thing to consider as well.
Problem there is that the wiring wouldn't be worth anything because you wouldn't have that much wire. But what you do have is a solar panel and people steal the solar panels. Unless you put them up so high and put razor wire up there so they can't get to them.
That makes the trail very welcoming.
It's just a, it's such a problem. Because the wiring is worth a lot of money now. And they can literally just cut it and pull it from pole to pole.
Well, it sounds to be incorrect, me if I'm wrong, removing the lights is the consensus of the council. We might have some just some differences of opinions, how to get that information out to the public. But I think that's something internally we can handle and reach out to council members before we do it and make sure that that's the best option. Because I do I do think this is going to rankle some feathers. You know, but it's also interesting, it's messaging to say that, you know, there's no other part of the trail that even has this. And so many of them have been vandalized that they've been inoperable for years now. So I'm not sure that we're really missing a whole lot, except potential.
I mean, the other way to do it again would be have security patrols and actually patrol it every night. You could do it, but it would cost you, I mean, you got the repair and then it's probably going to cost you eighty thousand dollars a year to have it patrolled or more.
Yeah, I think that's probably the least feasible.
At least you're not losing it every week or two.
Yeah.
If we really wanted to have it down there, that's, I think that's the only option is get rid of it or have security and replace it.
Okay. Do we have enough on that? Any other comments, questions, concerns?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move forward with that. Thank you.
Have a unilluminated path forward. Okay, we do not have a closed session tonight. But Paul, you're up on.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, say yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are adjourned from our Midvale City Council meeting. Does anyone need a break? Nope.
No.
Okay, we're moving forward. Does it matter what order we go in? Should we do RDA next? Okay, we will do the RDA next. Welcome everyone to our Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City Meeting, May sixth, twenty twenty five. We did have a workshop item earlier tonight for the RDA, unprecedented workshop. We will move along to general business and a roll call. Rory, will you see who is still awake?
Board member Michelash?
Yes.
Billy?
Here.
Brown?
Present.
Glover?
Here.
I had to think about it.
Okay, and board member Robinson is again, hopefully doing something fun. Moving on to public comments, any person wishing to comment on an an item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the Redevelopment Agency now. By stepping forward, you will have three minutes if you so choose. Seeing no one, we all just look over here at the side. Seeing no one, we'll move on. We have a public hearing tonight. Receive public comments regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty six Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City tentative budget beginning July one, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Budget guru, Mariah Hill.
I usually make Cody do this, but. Curse him.
Who's Cody?
Yeah.
As Matt would say, he's no longer with us.
Okay, it's just similar to the to the city budget. This is again in a very tentative position and this one for a little bit of a different reason, which is that we have a new RDA director. And so this is information that came from Cody. And then just with the shift in jobs, there wasn't time to readdress this with the new RDA director. So this is what Cody gave us, it's on its way. And then it will be finalized by the time we adopt the final budget. So the RDA has five funds. The first is the RDA operations. This is all the different funds put money into this so that we can pay all their salaries and they're operating out of this. So the there's no major changes to this, just in what the administrative fees are, salaries and wages. And again, it's covered by the transfers from other RDA accounts. The Bingham Junction project area has some changes in the revenue sources. We got some more actual data from after Cody was here. And then also we have changes to property ownership. Because of that, there's changes to developer reimbursements. Some developer reimbursements finished, some projects completed. And then again, changes to interfund transfers. So that is the summary of what's happening with all those changes in the different expenditures. But again, another piece of this is settling, like Cody's notes said, to be programmed. And then that's up to our new RDA director. So stuff to be figured out, we've got a big long meeting scheduled and it will will be figured out. In Jordan Bluffs, again, we got some actual data to to reference back on to make projections for twenty twenty six. And and then just different, the major changes are are transfers to different funds, making sure we're making the proper transfers to citywide housing and that's some programming changes. In Main Street, we've had some project project completions and adjustments to different loan programs and things like that. Events, adding an event for potential Oktoberfest on Main Street. And then their revenue, this is their second year of being triggered. So we are seeing increases in their revenue that haven't been there before. And transfers to citywide housing and administration. And then our citywide housing budget, this is supposed to be twenty percent of the revenue of all the RDA RDAs. And we are again working on honing this in, but have had success in our affordable housing incentives and hope that that's coming as well. And just making sure that we've had all of our our proper transfers. So that was way easier than the other one.
Any questions or comments for Mariah? Okay, hearing none. This is a public hearing, so I will consider a motion to open this public hearing to public comment.
May I motion we open a public hearing?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are open to public comment if anyone would like to comment on the proposed budget. Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to close public comment.
May I motion we close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, we are out of public comment and there is a motion on the board. Not everyone at once.
Mayor, I move we adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash zero two RDA, adopting the tentative budget for the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Rory, recall the yeas and nays.
Yes, board member Billings.
Yes.
Glover?
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
And Michelash?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, consent agenda. We have two items, consider minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. And to set the date and time for a public hearing, June third, twenty twenty five at seven P M. To consider approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty six Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City budget beginning July first, twenty twenty five and ending June thirty, twenty twenty six. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
May I motion we accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeas and ayes.
Yes, board member Mikulas.
Yes.
Clever.
Aye.
Billings.
Yes.
And Brown.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously as well. We have one action item tonight, Consider Resolution Number 2025-03 RDA, approving the term sheet for a business loan agreement between the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City and the Honeysuckle Coffee Company. Kate, RDA Director.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Board. I don't have my PowerPoint up, but.
I feel like she's, I feel like she's got a later time picked for this, and so she's just stalling.
I don't know where he went.
Okay.
Well, and I don't want to touch it because my brain's.
I can probably, if I connect my computer, it probably won't show up, like, show up either way.
Probably not.
There it comes.
I didn't touch it. I was going to, but I didn't. She talks fast.
Perfect, okay. So I'm bringing back before the board the loan proposal for Honeysuckle Coffee Toe for final approval. As a reminder, Honeysuckle has applied for a $250,000 loan to build out a cafe and bakery at its new location just across the street here at 7511 Main Street. The proposed loan terms are the same as what was presented last time, except for we've made a change to when the first payment would be due, and that is because it's going to take a lot longer than they had expected to open the business, just due to all the construction and the utilities that will be needed prior to their grand opening. So just again, as a refresher, the loan amount is $250,000. It would be for a term of seven years with an interest, with a 0% interest rate. The first payment will be the first full month after they open the business or December 1st, whichever takes place soonest. The borrower will also make equal monthly payments, which was outlined in the amortization schedule that was included in the packet. They also agree to submit receipts and invoices and other evidence to show that they're using the funds of the loan for the permitted uses. They will be pledging 70% collateral for the loan. This will include newly purchased equipment for the Midvale Cafe, as well as their existing equipment that will be, that is located at their Sandy and Salt Lake City location. On that equipment, the RDA will hold a first position lien, and then the remainder will be held through the equity in the borrower's personal residence, and the RDA will hold a second position lien on that. The fiscal impacts, so the current program budget is at 1.5 million. If we approve the $250,000 loan to Honeysuckle, that will bring the overall budget of the program to 1.25 million. Any questions?
Where is it in the new, the new buildings? Is that what it's in?
No, so it's actually going to be located in the home. It's, right now, it's a residential home, but they will be.
It's the one right across.
Kind of like the park in downtown Salt, or not downtown, well.
Yeah. Like the park cafe, yes.
Where it's like a home converted? Okay, that's cool. That's cool.
Yeah, and the garage, they will be utilizing as their bakery, so they'll have a full build out there as well, and then they'll do.
Outdoor games.
Yeah, South Carolina barbecue.
I see like bagels and stuff. I hope you guys, the city hall people, are going to keep this place probably pretty busy.
Yes.
I know I personally plan.
If they can't make their payments, they're going to have to pay in bagels.
Well, there you go.
I mean, I would take that.
I did have a question. I remember last meeting, can you go back to the next one? This one? So some of this stuff bothers me a little bit because, I mean, we're not in like the business of selling like cafe equipment, you know? If the worst-case scenario happened, like, what is the city of Midvale going to do with like a bunch of, you know, cafeteria, like, equipment? And also, like, the, the, the personal residence, that seems bothersome to me as well, just, you know, I wouldn't want to have to get into that scenario where we're like, okay, your kitchen equipment didn't sell for what we needed to, so now we're coming after your house. Just all seems like very risky on their part to take that.
It's sort of part of business, you know?
It's just like, I mean, you have to have collateral to borrow at any bank, so.
Was this discussed last time?
Yeah, you missed it.
I missed it. This would have been something I super wish I would have heard, I think.
Yeah.
Is there another component to it as well, to the shop?
The smoked meat.
Like, and then event space. Yeah, they'll have like an outdoor entertainment space where they'll have like cornhole.
You said, okay.
I mean, yeah, so it'll be like.
Smoked meat, like an actual barbecue?
Yeah.
So like, it'll be like a breakfast thing for this portion and then like a dinner?
Yeah, so like breakfast in the morning and the early afternoon, and then in the evenings they'll do like barbecue.
How did I miss this? This is the food is like the thing that I want to talk about the most. All right.
The thing is, if, if, hopefully never happens, but if Midvale does take it back, we don't go out and try to sell the stuff. There are people that that's what they do, they sell all this equipment to new owners of new shops, so.
Yes, and I'll add that for this to all happen, they would have to, I mean, the business would have to, I mean, it would have to go out of business. They would have to refuse to pay off the loan or not have the cash flow to pay off the loan. And then this is kind of like the last resort. In order to protect the city, we, and the value of the equipment, because equipment depreciates every year, we've only accepted 40% of the current value, so.
I just haven't seen language like this before in these loans that we've done, so it was striking.
Yeah, in the past, we've done, I've, we've done a personal home and then owned like property that they've already owned that was like another location. For this business, there isn't, I don't believe they own, there are other locations, so.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that clarification. Any other questions for Kate? The potential business owners are here as well, if anyone had any questions for them. Otherwise, there is a motion on the board for the RDA to consider.
Mayor, I move that we pass Resolution Number 2025-03 RDA, approving the term sheet for a business loan agreement between the Redevelopment Agency of Midvale City and Honeysuckle Coffee Company LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, we call the yeas and ayes.
Yes, board member Clever.
Aye.
Brown?
Yes.
Mikulas?
Yes.
And Billings?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously, and congratulations. We look forward to visiting you very soon.
What's the, what's the timeline again?
I like it.
Okay, we do not have a closed session tonight, so Paul.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Moving on, three of three, the Municipal Building Authority Meeting. Welcome, everyone, to the Midvale City MBA Meeting, a very rare meeting. We have these once or twice a year. We will start with a roll call vote. Rory?
Yes, board member Mikulas.
Here.
Billings.
Here.
Brown.
Attending.
Clever.
Here.
Okay, that is all of us, and board member Robinson, of course, is on an island, maybe, perhaps. Moving on, public comments. Anyone wishing to comment on any item not otherwise scheduled for a public hearing on the agenda may address the Municipal Building Authority Board at this point. You'll be given three minutes. You'll also be in the annals of history because no one has ever given public comment before the MBA.
Do it.
Do it. Seeing no one, Sue, I gave you a chance for immortality. We'll move on to our public hearing. Receive public comment regarding the fiscal year 2026 Municipal Building Authority Proposed Tentative Budget beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. Now, out of the corner of my eye, I see Mariah Hill walking up again.
The easiest one of all.
Don't say that.
It is the, all right, our MBA exists basically to be a tool for paying debt for this building on some street lighting debt, some leases across the city. So basically, we collect lease revenue from a few different places that are listed here, and then we pay our debt. In 2024, the street lighting portion of the bond matured, so that made some big shifts in the size of this budget, but it is currently $394,753 in total. That's all.
Oh, any questions or comments for Mariah? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to open to public comment.
Mayor, I motion we open public comment. Public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Public comment, Sue. No public comment. I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
Mayor, I motion that we close public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there is an action item on the board for the board to consider.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 2025-01 MBA, adopting the tentative budget for the Midvale City Municipal Building Authority for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2026.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rory, as fast as you can, we call the roll.
Yes, board member Mikulas. Yes.
And Billings. Yes.
Clever.
Aye.
And Brown.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, we have two items, Consider Minutes of December 3, 2024, and to set a date and time, June 3, 2025, at 7:00 PM, for a public hearing to consider adoption of the fiscal year 2026 Municipal Building Authority Final Budget beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. Is there a motion to approve?
Mayor, I motion we approve the consent agenda.
Motion and a second. Rory?
Board member Brown.
Yes.
Mikulas.
Yes.
Clever.
Aye.
Motion to.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Yes.
We are adjourned at 9:09 PM.
I don't know.
So Garrett wins because he didn't go.
Yeah, that's right.
Adam went over by a minute.
So Adam went.
Yes.
No, Adam went over by a minute.
So.
Trying to speed up because I thought Garrett would win.